The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. I'm going to read the the new rule for the open meeting law and then George, maybe you guys can open your meeting too and then we'll do like an attendance. So just for the sake of everybody right now, Gilia Fabian, Chairman for the Lakeville Board of Selectmen and Richard LaCamera, Lakeville Selectmen are present. And I'm just going to read this and then we can go from there. "In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the April 6th, 2020 I'm sorry, the April 14th, 2020, meeting, public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake, lake cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash." So the Board of Selectmen meeting is open and I just also wanted to announce that cable is taping and I'm gonna let George, you can open your meeting now. I think switch is muted.
Oh.
There we go. Okay.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to, do we need to read the remotely conducted open meeting script that we have for that? Do we have to go through that whole script?
Um, I don't know if we need to go through the whole script, but I could just add you to this, the one that I read. Instead of saying "meeting of the Board of Selectmen," we can say "meeting of the Board of Selectmen" and "Finance Committee," so you don't have to read that. I'm sorry.
No, totally fine. So with that, let me just go ahead and just do a quick roll call.
Okay.
So Darren, are you on? Darren Beals?
Darren is muted again.
Darren?
Yes, sorry, technically.
But we'll get this all ironed out before the end of the meeting, sure. Jen, are you on?
I'm here.
All right, and then we'll check in on Brian, although we need to reappoint him for the time being, correct?
Yes.
So Brian, you there?
I am present.
All right. That's good. Good. We're all set then.
Okay, so we have your meeting open. We have the Board of Selectmen meeting opened. I do just want to welcome everyone to our joint meeting. Spring is usually the time of year where we see each other a lot, but clearly in this case, we're seeing each other through video, so number two on our agenda, and we sort of have a mutual agenda just for the folks at home. So number two on the Board of Selectmen agenda is to discuss the reappointment of Brian Day to the Finance Committee. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, George, so that you guys can make your decision or make a recommendation and then Rich and I will have conversation after that.
Yeah, so just to provide a little bit of background or clarity to this, so there was, we lost a FinCon member at the beginning of last, I'm sorry, the beginning of this year. The intention was to have Brian Day on. We had appointed him to have him through the election. Obviously, the election never happened, so as a result of that, we just need to extend the appointment and that's essentially what we're doing here today, so does anybody have any discussion or should we just go ahead and someone make a motion and then we'll vote on? From the FinCon, anybody? All right, in that case, I'd like to make a motion to extend the appointment for Brian Day until such a time that we can have an election in the future.
And I'll second the motion.
Great. Any discussion?
No.
All right, so in this, so it's only Jennifer and Darren and I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so unanimous, so Brian is a part of FinCon again.
Okay, so we now will take that recommendation. That's okay, we'll take the recommendation. And Rich, are you with me?
I am.
Okay, so I will take, given the recommendation by the Finance Committee, I will make a motion to reappoint Brian Day for, I would like to put in there a term, according to Lily and Drain, who is the town clerk, she suggests that we either put, that we should put a date on it. So I don't know, Rich, if you wanna, if you wanna discuss that before or after, if we should make the motion first and then we can talk about that, which means we would have to amend the motion. So I don't know if you-
What I would suggest, Leah, is that we appoint him till the next election.
Okay, all right, because she had made that recommendation. I know, she had made that recommendation, so I just didn't know if there was any. Okay, so I will make a, I'll make a motion that we appoint, we reappoint Brian Day for the Finance Committee until the next election, in which case that spot will be filled.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Fabian?
Aye.
The camera, aye.
Okay, thank you. So that that is done. Welcome back, Brian.
Thanks, nice to be back.
So George, I'm gonna let you do numbers three and four, if that's okay. Actually, I think number four was taken off of the agenda. Is that correct? Anyone? Four was the minutes.
Yeah, item four was tabled.
I think four was tabled. Well, so why don't you, you work on Agenda Item Number Three?
Give me a quick second. Could you just, I don't have the agenda in front of me, because it's obviously on my phone.
Okay. Um, the Agenda Item Number Three is Finance Committee Review and Vote to Approve Reserve Fund Transfers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Do you need someone to read those?
Yeah, and I'm so sorry, I just don't have it. I'm gonna try to pull it up on my other computer, but yeah, if somebody has that handy, I'd love for her to just kind of be, just go through it really quickly.
Okay, does anyone from the Finance Committee have that?
I've got it open here. Are we voting on these individually per transfer or all in one?
We should do it individually.
Okay. Let me just rotate this so I'm not cocking my head over.
I'm gonna try to pull it up myself, actually.
Sure, I'll just read off the first one while you're doing that. So the first Reserve Fund Transfer Request is from Finance Committee Reserve Fund in the amount of $6,000 to Property and Liability Insurance. Explanation being that there are increased premiums for the new police station as well as cybersecurity coverage.
Okay. So someone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, Jen Sipiora.
I'll second the motion, George Wapopoulos. Any discussion?
No, I didn't get that, that on the agenda either. I have the Board's agenda, but it doesn't show our agenda items, so.
I also received just the high-level agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just had, um, three, well, it was two, three, and four are the Agenda Items for, on the Selectmen's, which is the Finance Committee stuff. And then we have the budget stuff immediately following, so after that, if you guys wanted to adjourn your meeting, you could, so we put all the finance stuff up front. I know this is a little confusing, so.
I dropped the link in the chat if anybody wants to pull it up. So you-
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Anyone know how to do that?
Yeah. Luckily, this is how I spend my days all the time now, so.
All right. It's also, looks like it's on the website as well, so.
So we're on page five of that PDF.
Thanks.
Okay, so you guys have that motion.
Got it, okay.
I think George seconded, so.
Yep, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
Um, all right. Let's make, let's go to vote, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Unanimous. Roll call vote, please. Okay. Jen, you can go first.
What do I, what am I doing? I'm sorry.
Just, just say aye and your last name.
Aye, Jennifer Sipiora.
Aye, Darren Beals.
Aye, Brian Day.
Aye, George Wapopoulos.
Aye, you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. So we said that number three we're gonna table, is that right?
Well, you still have other transfers that have to be made.
The next one's Fire Department Safety Equipment in the amount of $13,500.
Okay.
Could we get a little more information on that one?
Page eight has a breakdown of the various pieces of equipment.
Okay.
Or page seven, sorry.
And it also says one-time safety equipment needs, which most fire departments have available to the staff. And then it says, "See the attached listing."
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve item four. Do you want a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's still Agenda Three, it's just the second transfer of part of three.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, so I still-
So three basically has like four or five different transfers. This is the second.
In that case, Maureen, are we able to approve them all together?
No, no, you have to approve them individually.
Okay.
So if you'd like, I could just read them out as you want to make it. So you've already approved the Property and Liability Insurance for $6,000. This is the Fire Department Safety Equipment for $13,500.
Thank you.
If you want to make a motion for Fire Department Safety Equipment in the amount of 1300, $13,500 to come out of for the Reserve Fund.
All right, I'd like to make a motion.
And I'll second the motion. Oh, did you still have to read it out?
No, no, go for it, that's fine. Let's go ahead and-
I'll second the motion for the Fire Department Safety Equipment in the amount of $13,500. It's Jay Sipiora.
And George Wapopoulos made the motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Rich LaCamera. Can you hear me, George?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I reviewed this with the fire chief and the fire chief has already bought $6,000 worth of his equipment out of his existing budget in his expense budget and that he has 75% left in his expense budget. And the one item there, this King Vision for $2,919, he can't use that, you know, anymore, so I think that this ought to go back to the fire chief and, you know, he, he said he didn't formally request these to be transferred out of the Reserve Fund. So I think there needs to be clarification unless Maureen can clarify this.
Mike didn't come to me and talk to me about this. This came through Todd, who had talked to Mike.
Okay, but you, but you signed the form, Maureen, requesting the transfer.
I sure did.
Well. So is, are we able to have Mike speak? I think he's on the, on the call with us.
Yeah, can you unmute him?
He's still muted, Mike.
Oh, there he is, yes.
Can't hear you, Mike.
Thanks, I think might have got, somebody unmuted him, then he unmuted himself and went back to mute.
No.
No, nothing. We can't hear you, Mike, if you can hear us.
I think the fire, two connections to speak and one of them is not working.
So Rich, you're saying some of these items have already been purchased from the existing fiscal year budget?
This is budget, yep.
Gotcha.
And the one particular item, he doesn't need anymore, because it doesn't comply to, and I'm not a technical person about this thing, but it's $2,900. And as far as he concerned, that he's pretty sure he can get the rest of it out of his existing budget. So.
All right.
You would have taken out.
So in light of that, and Mike, is Mike able to join us, do you think, or no?
So we have to table this one and redo it, because voted as one lump sum, we couldn't sever it.
Okay, all right, in that case, I'd like to make a motion to table this item.
I'll second the motion, Jay Sipiora.
George Wapopoulos made the motion, thank you. I'm gonna remember this. All right, so all those in favor?
All right, Darren Beals.
Aye, Jen Sipiora.
Aye, George Wapopoulos. And Brian, can we get a vote?
Oh, I think Darren and I went over each other. Aye, aye.
Okay, so this, this item is tabled. What's next?
The other one's listed as two, but it's actually one. It's the Facilities Maintenance.
Excuse me. I switched locations, this is Chief O'Brien.
Oh. Hey, Chief.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you help me turn that down? Um, I switched locations, I don't know if I'm too late, I ran out of the office to come downstairs. Is there any questions for me?
Well, we actually just took a vote to table the item. It sounded like some of this had already come out of the budget. There was gonna be, we would have to reintroduce it in order to vote for it. But since you're on, I'd love to hear about what your, what the thought process was or what we're looking to do and then that way for the next time, we'll at least have some clarity.
So there were some missing items. Basically, I took an inventory of the department's equipment. I deem these items as life safety items, things that needed to be purchased. And back in December, I had a discussion with Todd about the best way to go about buying these items. I never really heard back or got a direct answer, but at that time, it was mentioned about doing a one-time transfer into my budget to make these purchases. In the absence of any kind of feedback or knowledge of this going on, I went ahead and very cautiously made purchases over the next few months of the most needed items. And there's still pending items on that list. But it's, it's basically, I didn't realize this was an active event or things, these movements were being made. So it was, I was playing catch-up today to try and come up with the numbers and find out what I actually needed. I have about 25% left in that, that fire, fire equipment line item. And I also have some EMA money that could be available, depending on what my expenses are related to COVID-19. So I was really kind of playing catch-up with, with today. If, if I had knowledge of this, of this movement a little bit earlier, I would have been able to, to be prepared for a more informed statement right now.
No worries, so, but it does sound like we'll, we'll need to make an adjustment on it, which is totally fine. And we could just, we could just vote on it on, at the next meeting when we kind of have more time to kind of digest everything that, that needs to, to be had essentially.
Sounds like a plan.
All right, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
So we've already voted, so I guess we can move on to the next item?
Is that the IT Director one?
Is it better if I just share my screen or do we want everybody's? Is it?
You have ability to share your screen, because you're not a-
Host disabled it. Never mind.
You're not a host.
Do not have the power.
Hold on. I can hold. Low tech. Next item is IT Director's Salary in the amount of $21,000. Oh, who shared it?
It's granted the power temporarily.
Good job.
Impressive.
There we go.
Let me know if it's not big enough.
Nope.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the IT Director's Salary for $21,000. Let me get a second. This is George Wapopoulos.
I'll second it, Jen Sipiora.
All right, any discussion? What do we know? What, what are we doing with this and what's going on?
So the overage came over the summer. Tim Graybars had worked in the police station, on the police station building on the new server room and all of that, so these overages are coming based on overtime that was incurred because of the new police station building.
Got it.
So this, this isn't a, an increase in salary that's cowering forward to the next fiscal year. This is just a makeup for work already done, basically.
Not roll over, it's not an increase in the budget line, it's a supplement for an overage on the line.
All right. All right. Anybody else have any, anything to add or any questions? All right, all those in, in favor of approving the IT Director's Salary of $21,000? Please say aye.
Aye, Jen Sipiora.
Aye, Dave.
Aye, Beals.
Aye, Wapopoulos. All right, passes unanimous.
Excuse me, George, who made the motion and who seconded that?
So, Chrissy, I made the motion and Jen seconded.
When Brian shared his screen, he knocked me off my words, so.
Sorry.
That's okay, I'm good now.
What's, what's, what's our next item?
Another transfer into two different accounts. First is $10,000 into Facilities and Maintenance Expenses. Explanation given for that is unforeseen building repairs due to aging facilities, historic library, town offices, fire station, library, and park. Fiscal year 2021 budget has been increased by $20,000 to address ongoing maintenance concerns. The second line item for this transfer is Public Health Nurse Services in the amount of $5,400. Explanation given, additional services required due to health agent vacancy and a variety of health concerns. So the total is $15,400 between the two of them.
All right. I'd like to make a motion, George Wapopoulos, to approve Brian, did you say $15,400?
Yeah, do we do the total amount, Maureen, even those two accounts? Okay, yep, 15,400.
$15,400 for what is deemed as required updates and medical.
And I'll second the motion, it's Jen Sipiora.
All right, any discussion?
If you guys want some extra information, I can give that to you. So as you know, the public health nurse has been used right now in the last month and a half in a way that we've never had to use before. We are anticipating, and I know one just came in, we're trying to get some, some grant and reimbursement money, but we know there's gonna be significant overages on how much time the public health nurse is going to be spending for the next couple of months, as she has a ton of reporting duties related to COVID-19. So she's already in the negative on that line and this is to get the line to where it needs to be and shore that up. And again, like the other one, it's not going to be, hopefully, not gonna be next year with budget line increases again. Hopefully, this will end very soon, but we're preparing.
Maureen, I just have a question. Is the town gonna be submitting for FEMA's request for public assistance for any of the COVID-19 expenses?
Absolutely, and we've got, we went out for one supplemental, $5,000 and I think we got $4,200 of it today or yesterday. And then we're going for a secondary one that has, has just become open, which I signed just last night.
Okay, good.
So we're trying to move forward and we're trying to get all the, the allot of money to us also. And for the Facilities Maintenance Line, it was, you can see where it's been increased in the 2021 budget line. There was also one thing that I don't see on there, but is also part of it for the unforeseen building repairs, et cetera, et cetera. We also have some routine maintenance that needs to be done on our septic system.
Is that gonna be an additional transfer, Maureen?
Nope, this will be covered.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Starting, we'll start with Jen.
Aye, Sipiora.
Dave?
Aye, aye.
Aye, Beals.
Aye, Wapopoulos. All right, we're good. Next item.
Hold on, I gotta rotate. Okay, next up, looks like is for highway, so it's deficit resulting from 2019 to 2020 winter conditions. Total amount of $77,687 broken up between snow and ice wages, snow and ice vehicle and equipment repairs, snow and ice contracted services, and snow and ice road treatment supplies.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Highway Department's request for transfer for $77,687 from the Reserve Fund. Can I get a second?
I'll second it, Jen Sipiora.
So Wapopoulos made the motion, Sipiora seconded. Discussion or any additional information?
No, this is pretty informative, but if anyone has questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Now, I just, this is just recalling my memory, is this every year we transfer the funds for the, the road supplies?
Every year, we spend the line deficit, because currently, the line is only funded at $50,000.
Yep, okay, now I remember.
And then what happens is, as we go through the year, we figure out where we are with the, the snow and ice.
Yep.
And we pull it from reserves. So next year, I made an adjustment, a tentative adjustment, and I added another $50,000 to that budget, so we don't hit this point so quickly in the future, where we go negative, but in all likelihood, we will almost always negative on our snow and ice for regular winter.
Okay.
And this is basically standard practice, Master General Law allows for anyways, right?
Yeah, we do it every, so, so, so we run a deficit, knowing that we'll be running a deficit and then just do a reserve transfer because of the way that we get reimbursed, is that right?
Correct, and I didn't want to do the reserve transfer before the second week in April, because I still remember the April 1st snowstorm.
Well, there's still time, you never know.
Right.
Just took my snow sticks down, don't say that.
All right, um, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, starting with Jen?
Aye, Sipiora.
Dave?
Aye, Dave.
Aye, Beals.
Aye, Wapopoulos. All right, good stuff.
That was the last of those.
Okay. So next, we have George, Finance Committee to Approve Minutes of January 13th, 2020. But it's my understanding that this was tabled, so I'm not sure if everyone got them, if everyone was able to review them. but it's my understanding that this was tabled, so I'm not sure if everyone got them, if everyone was able to review them. But I, unless you know differently, I have that the Finance Committee isn't prepared to vote on this. Do you know, otherwise?
Nope, that's right. That's, that's exactly what I understand as well, so moving on.
All right, so that takes care of Agenda Item number four. Agenda Item number five is an FY21 budget update, and I'm going to turn this over to Rich LaCamera because he is the selectman, who is the lead on the budget this year.
And here, I'd like, I'd like to go to item number six first to discuss the fiscal '20 budget, please.
Okay, that's fine, we can do that.
Okay. Okay, as far as the, the budget is concerned, from an expense, you know, standpoint, overall, we are in very good shape. We just did some transfers, of course, but we don't have a lot of concerns about deficit except for the fire department. The fire department, as you know, we hired two temporary firefighters and we're expecting to get 75% reimbursement back on that, but like anything else, the reimbursement, you know, takes time. So we may have to fund the line item, but I think there's enough monies in the existing, you know, budget, you know, to do that. Other than that, you know, the budget, because we're almost nine months in now, we seem to be in, overall, in pretty good shape. Now, one of the things that worries me is the revenue projections that we use for fiscal '20's budget. As far as the excise tax is concerned, we had our big commitment in Februaryish, somewhere in there. So we, we have almost our revenue numbers in for the, for the excise tax, which is like $1.2 million, so that's a good thing. As far as the other areas, you know, within that, we've already exceeded most of our, our revenue projections, including building permits. The building permits have, revenue's been pretty high, and we continue to get permits remotely online. So that process, you know, really, you know, hasn't stopped, you know, at all. As far as the, the, the tax payments are concerned, the second, the fourth payment, excuse me, is due on May 1st. You know, we have extended the payments, you know, through June 1st. Most of all those payments come in from mortgage companies anyways, so the majority of that revenue should be solid. Doesn't mean that there may not be some tax bills that don't get paid or whatever. The big concern that I have is that the state aid, you know, I was, I was on a call today, you know, they were talking about the revenue projections for the rest of this year from the state and the revenue projections for next year's, you know, budgets. The, from the lottery money standpoint, you know, that we may get a slight reduction in that area, we don't know, but once again, it's not going to significantly affect our revenue numbers, our actual revenue numbers at this point. There is one item on the state aid cherry sheet that worries me, is the $464,000 from the smart growth revenue. So if they decide to cut that or eliminate that, then that could cause a problem for us. But overall, I think we're okay. So I guess we can go on, Madam, unless somebody has any questions on '20's budget.
I, I don't, I know the lottery money, I think we said was maybe 30 grand, so I agree, Rich, that the, that the smart growth money is much more concerning, $464,000, so hopefully they'll be giving us updates regularly on what to expect. George, anything?
No, appreciate the update. That was comprehensive and it's, uh, looking forward to all this getting back to normal, but yeah, the delays are definitely going to be there, so looks like we're in good shape for it though, so we should be fine, and we'll just kind of move forward and wait for this to pass.
Okay, all right, keep going.
All right, for the, coming up, the fiscal '21 budget, you know, we, we fortunately, all of us, you know, had our budget meetings and, you know, know exactly, you know, where we are, you know, at this point, so that was a good thing that we kind of forced it to all happen in three days, because at this point, it might have been difficult, you know, to get this, get that done. But, so for a budgeting standpoint, from an expense standpoint, you know, we kind of know where we are, you know, what the projections are going to be. We are negotiating three contracts right now. They're, they're in the process and they haven't been finalized yet, so that obviously would have an, an impact, you know, on the budget as well. From a receipt standpoint, a local receipts, once again, I feel confident that the projections, the conservative projections that we put together, that you guys have seen, are still good, you know, overall, from, you know, the excise tax projections to the permitting projections and, and other areas. So I don't see a significant reduction in that area. Now, there is one key factor, you know, with the, the excise taxes, people aren't buying cars right now, and hopefully that'll bounce back, but that won't affect this year. So hopefully by the time, you know, some of those excise tax bills come in later this year and beginning of the following year, that we would have recovered from a, from that standpoint. Once again, as far as the state aid numbers are concerned, we don't get significant state aid numbers except the lottery, and you know, right now, I think it was Leah has pointed out that if we get the same as last year, we'd be happy and we can deal with that. But once again, the smart growth number, you know, is a concern, and we need to be prepared for that if that doesn't come in, but I know the House and the Senate, the House right now is, is putting together their preliminary budget, and I guess over the next couple of weeks, going to have something, but the key, the key thing from the state is to, is their revenue projections. And from what I heard on the call today, they got significant reductions in income tax and sales tax and lottery sales and, and stuff like that, so that's definitely going to have an impact. To what extent that is, I don't know. None of us will know, and we probably won't know that, you know, for a few weeks. But, you know, we're planning to push ahead, you know, to get the budget together, and then we will adjust the budget accordingly if we have to, depending upon those revenue projections as well. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay, um, I appreciate, you know, Rich, that you're taking the lead. I think a lot of us are learning from you, on both the Finance Committee and myself. But I did want to add that I do know that we had stressed a maintenance budget. We didn't, you know, we didn't add a ton of new things to our, to our budget from last year, so it wasn't like we were overreaching last, for coming, for the next year coming up. So we're not, you know, we, there is a few places, a couple of positions that, you know, things have changed, so we're not, we're not scrambling yet. I don't know if you would agree with me on that, but, you know, there's still a couple of places where, you know, we did budget for a position here, but that, that haven't been filled, so there's still someplace to go, but I think we'll just, at least from where I stand from, just hope that, you know, when, when the economy opens back up again, that people will be out buying cars and people will be out eating at restaurants. The state can be getting its sales tax and, and we go back to a somewhat normal. So, George, do you, anyone on the Finance Committee have anything they want to, to add about, you know, the work we had all done, listening to all the budgets, any places that may be of concern for anybody? Nope. Maureen, anything?
No, just to piggyback on what Rich said about where our budget is and what it's doing now. It usually doesn't work to our favor that we have such reliance on residential taxes and not that much for business, but in this case, it is actually helping us. Places like Down the Cape and Plymouth, a lot of their budget is predicated on all these restaurant and tourism dollars, and they're, they're not coming in. So they're, they're in a much bigger scramble than us at this time, because they're not going to make revenue projections for 2020, and, you know, it remains to be seen what's going on for 2021. So something that's always been a little difficult for us turned out to be a little bit in our favor for us, just in this particular case.
Okay. Rich, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm all set for now, thank you.
So if no one else from the Finance Committee has anything, I'm going to move on to number seven, which is discuss the FY21 capital plan. I know I just sort of received the capital plan. I don't know if everybody else has it, but I just wanted to be sure that we all have it, and if the Finance Committee doesn't have it, that, you know, they can just get a copy of it too, but we were supposed to put together the finance, the capital plan review committee, which I think, maybe, Maureen, you can get us up to date on that. I'm not sure if that happened with everything that happened. We were trying to put together that committee, and I, I don't, I don't know where we're at if we got it together or not.
So the committee is together. They have not had their first meeting. We were going to schedule their first meeting to be end of March, beginning of April.
Okay.
Hasn't, hasn't materialized, and by virtue of, so for all of you out there, we didn't vote our, our free cash this year because we didn't have our Fall Town meeting, and we have all these capital items also, so it was kind of a little bit of wait and see on where this goes as to, depending on what, what happens with our, with our dollars on what we're going to fund. We might not be able to get to everything that we thought we'd be able to get to this year. So we might have to take a little bit of a wait and see approach, maybe two steps, something now and then something in the fall, just to ensure that we're, we're not operating under the gun at all, and we have some liquidity too, so.
Okay, and I do know that when we had asked, the department had, you know, to give us what their capital items may be, you know, we asked to put some priority in there, like give us your most important thing, number one, and, you know, doesn't really matter how much it costs. If that's what you need the most, then that's what we need to, you know. And just for people at home, some idea of what we're talking about is, like, police cruisers get purchased from what we call capital money. So every year, every couple of years, we do try to purchase a lot of these capital expenses. The highway department gets mowers and trucks, and just for anybody who doesn't know the types of things that goes in here. So again, I think this is definite work in progress right now, but I just wanted to be sure that we all have this document in front of us, what it looks like currently, so that we can go forward, any other meetings we have. Rich, do you have anything to add to?
Yeah, the, from the Finance Committee, the, I think you already know this because we provided you the information, that the free cash number is $1,080,000, okay? And almost all of that money was going to be used, you know, for any capital items. But I think that, excuse me, one of the things that we need to do is probably take a step back and look at what our priorities are with understanding the conditions. I mean, there's things that are a necessity, and there's things that, yeah, they're a necessity, but some of it can wait. So I think we'll be looking at that. The good news is, is that the state is allowing us to carry over any free cash that is not used by June 30th into next year. So, you know, we'd be safe, you know, from that perspective. So over the next couple of weeks, depending upon, we talk about time meeting here, that we got to make a decision on some of the things, because some of the things we need.
Right.
So, you know, maybe we spend $500,000. I don't know what the number is at this point, but just to be safe, because we don't know what's going to happen here from the, from the state, you know, standpoint.
Okay. Any questions from the Finance Committee on the, what we're looking at here for the capital plan or the use of free cash or?
I was just, I was just asking, when, so when do we plan on meeting for that? Do we have a?
So I can send out an updated meeting on, for the capital plan, for the capital expenditures committee. But yeah, I had to cancel the other one.
There you go.
Haven't been scheduled.
Okay, that's fine.
I just sent a slight comment more than anything. I was just going to say, I like how fire and highway kind of outline where possible, what they're replacing. I don't know if police can do that for like the items that revert this FY2020, just because it makes it easier for even the residents to know, like, wow, we've got equipment that old, perhaps. Obviously, it's harder to forecast out when you're looking at 2023, 2024, but if there's, if some of those items for 2020 or 2021 are, we know what they're replacing, we might start a little note in there.
Yeah, and Brian, on, on that, a lot, the police ones are replaced based on mileage, so the date not really be, the, the car may be two or three years old.
With a million miles on it.
Exactly, exactly. It circled like a jillion times, so they were replaced on mileage. And like Rich had said, you know, some of these, we can stretch a little bit longer. And like I was saying, maybe vote some now and then wait to the fall to see where we're really at with all of our funding and vote the rest.
Yeah, that'd be handy info though, you know, 2012 with 600,000 miles, it'd be great to see in there.
Just so you know, the fiscal '20 that's listed down, if anybody has the, the capital, the fiscal '20 has already been funded. It's fiscal '21 we're looking at, just so you know. The second column. So I don't know if you're looking at the capital plan or not, but I want you to know that, so.
All right, anybody else from the Finance Committee questions? Okay. So, um, I'm not sure if the Finance Committee wants to stay with us. If you want to adjourn your meeting, we're going to do a COVID-19 update. That's up to you folks.
Madam Chair, can I suggest that we go to number 10 to discuss the annual town meeting and the, so, if the Finance Committee wants to participate, that's up to you guys.
Because they have to be there with us, so, yeah, so we'll go to the Agenda Item number 10, which is the annual rescheduling of the annual town meeting and the review of the draft warrant. Does everybody have all that paperwork? George, I think you said it's on your phone, right?
Yeah, so I won't be able to look at it, but I do have it. I just can't access it.
You want to, do you want a copy of it? I mean, like a hard copy or?
No, I'll be able to, as soon as we get off, I'll be able to get it, so it's not a big deal. If you want to share a screen right now, that would be great too, but if we can't do that, then don't worry about it.
Okay, um, well, what the, what we really want to do first is the annual town meeting was scheduled originally for June 1st, 2020. So we're going to, I'm going to make a motion that the annual town meeting be changed to June, did I say June 1st or did I say January? The annual town meeting is previously scheduled for June 1st, 2020, and I'm going to make a motion, Rich, that we change the annual town meeting to June 22nd.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I would not recommend, even though we've agreed that we're going to do the June 22nd,
Yep.
I would not recommend that we vote to do this right now with all the uncertainty, you know, that what's going on, because once you pick a day.
Yep, then you're committed to the calendar.
Then you're committed to that, and it's very cumbersome to try to change that date. I would suggest that we wait a couple of weeks, see how this all plays out, but with the understanding, everybody knows that that's what we're trying to do, is June 22nd. Because once you post it and you post the warrant, then it becomes more difficult, you know, to change because we have a very short period of time between June 22nd and June 30th, unless the legislature changes it again to move it out to a further date. If, if for some reason it gets postponed, we are allowed under new statute that was just approved to go forward and use 1/12th of our previous year's budget, starting in June. to go forward and use one twelfth of our previous year's budget, starting in July. So we'd have, you know, at least money available to do that.
Yeah. So we can continue operating through the month of July if need be. Um, so. Okay. So we won't, I, I just really want to get the date on the calendar, but I understand.
Oh, the date's fine. You're gonna, we're gonna commit it to that, but.
Yeah.
We don't want to get ourselves into a position where we vote that.
Right.
And then we put the warrant out there and the warrant gets out there and then we got, we got stuck, you know? So I'd rather see us wait a couple of weeks.
Yeah. But, um, so the date that we're looking to do it on is June 22nd. And because the finance committee, um, should be present, I just really wanted you folks to have the date that we're looking at. So maybe you can, I clear your calendars. Hopefully it'll be an in-person, uh, meeting. I really hope. But anyways, so, um, if you can keep that date in mind, um, I do know that I would like to see us try to have a public, some kind of a public, um, warrant review, the Board of Selectmen warrant review meeting, where we go over, you know, pretty much things give folks some time. Last year, the warrant review meeting was very well attended because Route 79 project wasn't on there. Um, so I'm not quite sure how we're going to do that. If, um, you know, but we're, I'd like to be working on that, trying to find a way to make sure that people's questions can get answered on anything that's on the actual warrant. How, what do we have to do? Post it how many days before?
The warrant?
Yeah.
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks. So two weeks before is when the warrant has to be posted. So, um, we'll go from there. I don't know, Maureen, Rich, if you guys have anything else to discuss, go right ahead.
We will post the warrant well before that. I'm just saying, you know, the goal would be that if it's on June 22nd, just throwing a date out, I don't know what the dates are, you know, no later than June 1st.
Right.
We're going to go ahead with it or we're not going to go ahead with it. And since the town moderator is on here, you know, as well, the reason why we're not voting for a date, that if we did vote for a date and it had to be changed, then the town moderator would have to call the meeting and then postpone it to a later date.
Yeah. Which involves, you know, the town moderator doing a lot more work than she has to right now. So, and I know, I don't know Darren, if Katie's there or not, but if you could just let her know that, um, we will, we will stay in touch with her, but.
Okay. Yeah, she's upstairs. I'll let her know.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, anything else, Maureen, uh, Rich, on the annual, the draft review, the draft warrant here?
No.
Go ahead.
Nope, no, go ahead.
There's a few things that are missing. We had a, uh, a request from the regional school district about some technology. That article is not here.
You mean the request that just came in this, this week?
Well, there was a request a while ago.
Yeah. Is that the articles? Cause I know five and six are missing. Is that supposed to be?
Five was originally, um, 5G technology and we took it off, uh, because that no longer needs a town meeting vote. It could be a vote of the selectmen. Um, and six, I thought was a placeholder for the maps that we never got, but I'll have to double check on that, that we just got now. But yes, this was put together two months ago. So anything within the last two months after the warrant time closed wouldn't be part of this.
Appears to be a 14 emptied, uh, kind of hidden in there as well.
What was that?
14. Looks like it's also, um, doesn't have a title.
Oh, yep. There it looks like the 14, there's nothing for a 14. So we have, number 14. I wonder if we left that for.
There's a cover page. Tracy, do you have the cover page?
No, I just have the actual draft warrant.
All right. There's a cover page somewhere here. That have other ones.
So Rich, what you're saying is that we were supposed to receive something from the regional school district and it doesn't look like we have?
Oh, we did.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, we got it before they, uh, closed the, uh, the last day, the day before it was like March 9th or something. So we do have that.
All right. Well, uh, I'll look for an updated version because I don't see it here.
Okay. Maybe that's what.
I can forward it to you for a while because I was copied on it. So.
Sure. That'd be great.
You should have it though. Okay, um, the, talking about that, the flood plain maps, the problem with that is, is that, we have to hold a public hearing, you know, for that. And they also have to have the maps, you know, available for people to review and make comments on it. Um, I'm not sure we're going to have enough time, you know, to do that, you know, with the planning board. But I guess somebody should put together a calendar, um, of what needs to be done to accomplish that.
Okay.
The, um, other thing is article number eight. The way we had talked about this treasurer's position, changing it from, uh, an elected to appointed, is that, uh, we weren't going to do it by special legislation, is that the town meeting was going to vote it. And then it was going to go to a, uh, an election, a town election to vote it. So, I don't think we need, uh, special legislation to do that.
Okay.
Right, Maureen?
Right.
Okay.
That, that one needs to be changed.
It's either or. Um, it can either be by special legislation or by election. And it is the, uh, the, at the pleasure of the Board of Selectmen to decide which.
Yeah, we, we, I don't want it done by special legislation. I think the townspeople have a right to vote on.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, for me, article 10, this is the first I'm seeing it in this document. I know it's being suggested by town council. Um, it was suggested on January 17th, 2020, and I'm sure it's pretty cut and dry, but this is actually the first I've seen a bit and heard of it. So I would really like some more information on that, if anybody has anything for that.
Give me a second. It's hard not to lick my fingers with the papers here.
I mean, if, if I'm the only one that has questions, I can go over them with you, Mark.
So this came, this came from our, uh, our treasurer collector. So we already have article 10. It, it's already something that we voted on, but there changed one, uh, one item changed in there. It used to be, um, the old way it was said and the way that we accepted it and what we have in our bylaws says it, we can't collect or put a lien on anything until after 12 months. This gets rid of that 12 months.
Okay.
Yes. So it, it was hemming in our, our town collector on some things and, and, um, and she had asked for this in the fall, um, she had asked for this to, uh, be adopted for the newest version of this, including the, um, the, uh, the new language that says it's not 12 months. So, uh, we reached out to town council and said, just because we adopted that in the past, when the law changed, can we just go with that? And they said, no, because yours specifically calls out the 12 months. You have to vote it at town meeting again.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, so technically we could have done this if we had had a fall town meeting, which.
Absolutely.
Yep. Which there was a disagreement between selectman Powderly and I on that, but we ended up not having a fall town meeting. So we still have old business here.
Right.
Okay. Um, all right. Anything else, Rich? Uh, oh, actually article 11 was something that there was an error last year. So that, that's been corrected. So even though that was voted at last year's town meeting, we have the correct, the corrected.
Yeah. And it was one word that was the error and, uh, we, we appealed and said, it's one word. Can't that just be a ministerial error? And they said, no, it fundamentally changes what you meant. So you have to revote it.
Yep. So the attorney general. Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, okay. Rich, do you have any other ones?
I'm all set for now. So I just, we gotta just get a new draft and take a look at it in the next week. So we can get that finalized.
Okay.
Well, there is one last thing. We are going to have to call a special town meeting before the annual town meeting. But once again, we don't have to do that now.
Yeah, we don't have to do that now. Um, Tracy, can I get your attention? Are you, there you are. Can we, once all this gets a little bit updated or whatever it is we're going to do to this, can we just be sure that all the finance committee and, uh, the board of selectmen get it? So we can all just sort of review it again to make sure it's correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, okay. So that's it on that. Unless the finance committee has anything else, anybody else on that? Brian, I, I'm pretty sure you read most of that. Any questions?
Had to drop at four o'clock. He had a hard stop. So he's.
Okay. Um, anybody else though, from the finance committee, anything?
No, you guys don't need us. I'd like to, um, make a motion. You guys good with us? Like to make a motion to adjourn finance committee at 4:04. Jen, do you want to second it?
There we go. I'm talking and nobody can hear me. I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right. Um, all those in favor?
Aye, Sapiora.
Aye, Beals.
I've Leopolis. All right. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, I don't know, um, if Mike is with us. I just, I really, last week we gave a lot of information on the COVID-19 update. So I just want to reiterate the same stuff. Town hall is still moving forward. There's, um, papers that are available, um, in the vestibule there. We have one of the doors, there's a sign. You can print papers off, forms off of the website. Uh, people have email addresses attached to phone messages. So town business is still being done. Um, I just didn't know if Mike O'Brien, who's our fire chief, has anything to add for us. I know, Mike, you are working almost around the clock and I absolutely appreciate your efforts. But if you have anything that you want the people of Lakeville to know.
Well, I'd like you to know that the leadership of the Lakeville Fire Department, it's not just me, it's deputy and my lieutenants. They're, uh, they're working very hard to make sure that we're ready for whatever comes our way. We've, uh, gone through some different phases in all of this. One was a, uh, a preparatory phase. When we, when we heard it hit Washington, we kind of knew what was going to happen next. And we started ordering our, our PPE. And that early reaction put us in a much better, uh, situation than a lot of our neighboring communities. And we continue to be in a good position as far as PPE is concerned. Everything that we're doing, actually the next phase of the operation, we, we hit this weird lull where things got very, very uneventful for us, very quiet. People were a little, uh, people weren't going out. So we had fewer car accidents. People were fearful of, uh, the hospital. So they're looking for reasons not to call 911. And, uh, we've moved past that where we've actually had a very, very, very busy past three, four days. One of the difficult things is differentiating what is a COVID-19 call and what is somebody with a cold or with, uh, food-like symptoms. And I can tell you that, um, it presents, the, the virus presents it a lot of different ways. And some of the people that we did not anticipate as coming back, it's positive, had turned out to be positive. So I think our strategy of, of having our responders, um, completely covered in PPE is, has been a good choice. And it's kept our fire department almost intact. Uh, we do have two firefighters who are currently quarantined. And we have, uh, some testing scheduled for those firefighters as well. So we're, we've also, um, thanks to the, the action taken by the Board of Selectmen, we've, uh, we've been able to, um, silo or contain our work groups where they don't have to intermingle as much. And so it, it kind of, uh, mitigates the potential for, uh, exposure to take out a large portion of the department. So overall, the strategy seemed to be paying off. The, the early action on the protective equipment seemed to be paying off. Our, uh, I guess my next problem or anticipation, the next problem is to keep everybody's focused. Uh, because it's, it's quite strange what you get used to. It's, um, it's become second nature for us to throw the gear on and walk into people's houses with masks on. And that's when, when complacency sets in, that's when we have accidents and exposures. But it's been an interesting couple of weeks. I, it's, we had a car accident the other night and it was the first time I saw a bunch of responders operating the jaws of life, wearing surgical masks and, uh, had medical gear on and top of their, their firefighting equipment. It was kind of a strange sight. So it's strange times, but we, uh, we're, we're very much operational and we all, we're maintaining a good positive outlook and we're, we're pressing on for it.
Okay. I think I'm unmuted. All right. Um, thank you again for your efforts. I know we have new business a little bit further down, but if you want to do your portion of new business, I, I would, I don't mind skipping to, um, new business, which is, um, you have a commendation for, um, Nathan Gagne, who's one of your firefighters, who I think is sitting right to your right.
Right here. Sorry about the social distancing. My computer doesn't seem to be working right now. On, uh, on March 16th, we had a, uh, what came in as a brush fire. It was an exterior fire on, um, at, uh, 109 Rhode Island Road. And, uh, the fire and the time between the, the 911 call and our, our arrival at the scene, the fire had spread from the outside of the building into the walls and it was actually was making up into the attic space. It was, uh, it's a large, uh, business office with, uh, many tenants. It would have been a really, um, a spectacular and dangerous fire, had it taken hold and got going. And as you know, the vast majority of our firefighters are on-call firefighters. And when we have a call like this, the tone goes out, a signal goes out of the radio alerting our off-duty, non-qualified fighters of the emergency. And firefighter, uh, Gagne was home at, at that time. He received the signal and he responded in his own vehicle with his turnout gear to the scene, arriving first even before me. And, uh, he made a quick search inside the, uh, immediate area of the fire to assure that, ensure that people had gotten out and were safe. And he also had the presence of mind to grab the dry chemical extinguisher. So he, um, he extinguished the fire on the outside of the building and, uh, without that fire feeding into the structure, under pressure, it's likely that he slowed the fire inside the structure as well. So it gave the responders time to arrive on scene and we made, uh, made entry, opened up the building. We saved the building. The, uh, the property owner was, they called me the following day in tears because he actually saw a video of the whole sequence of operation and how it all went down. And he, he just couldn't say enough about the, uh, the fast thinking and the, the measures we took to save his building. And so I want to recognize people thinking on their feet and doing a good, good job. And, um, what he did was, did, did rise above what is expected of him and my expectations for all the firefighters. So I wanted to, uh, present him with this award. And if he wants to, maybe you want to hold it up, show the, uh, show the people of Lakeville. It's a little certificate and he also has a, uh, a ribbon that he can wear on his dress blues and, uh, and it's a, basically it's a, uh, it signifies his actions that day. And, and it's a, it's kind of a badge of honor.
I, I want to congratulate you too. Um, you know, when the chief first told us about this, I was, you know, I'm very emotional these days anyways, but for obvious reasons. But, um, I also know that you are new to us. So to have, you know, uh, someone who is fairly new to our, you know, our, our fire department, our town, to go above and beyond like that is just, you know, heartwarming. And, um, you know, I, I can't wait for the days when we can do these things in public again, so that, you know, we can have all your fellow firefighters there with you. And, um, so right now you're just going to have to have the chief as company right now.
That's quite okay.
You know, I don't know if you have anything to say. And then I'm going to ask Mr. LaCamera to, just to say something too.
Uh, I'm very honored to, uh, receive this. Uh, when chief sent me the message yesterday about this, it was, uh, completely off guard. I guess I was in the right place at the right time. And, um, I really love, love the fire service. And, um, I was, I was very happy to, uh, save that building and, you know, make sure everyone was safe inside. So it was a, it was a, it was a good day for everyone. So it was, it was a, it was a good day for everyone.
Sounds, um, sounds like most of our heroes, quite humble, if you ask me. Um, Rich?
Well, Nate, congratulations, I've known you since you was a little kid. So, uh, many soccer games and many basketball games, so congratulations, nice job.
Maureen?
Thank you, sir, for your service. Um, I, I, I got the, the note later, um, and, uh, Clarinda and I, the head of HR, uh, were talking yesterday about how wonderful it is to have good news, to have, you know, just even a shred of, of good news in this type of environment. And, um, you know, thank you for being an ambassador for the town of Lakeville.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is Deputy still with us? I'm not sure, I can't see everyone here. I know Deputy Purcell was with us for a little bit, but...
Yeah, I'm right here.
I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, Deputy?
No, I agree with, with, everybody's saying what they're saying about Nate. Good addition to the department, just taking him on as part-time, uh, one of the, the temporary hires, it was a good hire, and obviously, we made the right choice there, 'cause it's proof of what his ability is.
Yeah, and while I have, while I have you two, not to take away from Nate, but while we have you two, well, I, uh, I, again, I know Mike is, is, is extremely humble as well, and he always gives credit to you and to his lieutenants, and you are all going just above and beyond. Um, we can't thank you guys and girls enough for what you're doing. Um, so thank you, thanks for staying with us this long, too. So, Rich? Anything?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you, um, I think we're, congratulations again, Nate. It's so nice to have you here with us, and, um, I think Mike will, I think we're all set, right?
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Appreciate the time, and if you're listening to this, uh, this, uh, why is it the time to tell Nate more? It's a good story.
Yep, thank you. Um, so, under the rest of the COVID-19 update, I think, Maureen, there's not a whole lot to tell about Town Hall. Um, like I said, last week, not much has changed since last week. I don't know if there's anything significant that changed, or then, Rich, if you have anything you wanna add, other than how, I think you already went over the budget stuff, but if there's anything either one of you wanna add for the COVID-19 update?
I'll go, if that's all right. So, COVID-19, um, everything remains the same for our town offices and services and everything. Um, but I do want to, um, let people know that, uh, we are sending out, uh, patrols, and the police are looking for people in our parks, and, um, especially, um, at Ted Williams Park, um, trying to crack down on, on people not obeying the social distancing. Unfortunately, we had an incident, uh, at the parks over the weekend, I believe, um, where, uh, a, a person scaled the 10-foot, uh, fence for the tennis fence, and, uh, and was in there, um, when someone from the parks came by, um, and acted like it was no big deal. So, um, people have to understand, um, that we're trying to do our best to flatten that curve, and to make sure that we limit everyone's exposure. Um, and to be sending our police out to being dispersing people in crowds is a danger to them in this environment right now, and we don't wanna put them in danger. We wanna keep everyone safe, and, and that most definitely includes our p- our people in town. So, you know, please abide by, um, y- your safest set of rules that you have, and, and please know that we're trying to protect you and our people and our families.
Thank you. Rich? Anything?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay. Um, okay, so, we're gonna go on to Agenda Item Number Nine, to vote to discuss the rescheduling of the annual town election. And I am going to, uh, turn that over to you, Rich, if that's okay with you.
Well, once again, I guess, uh, that the two town clerks in Freetown and, and Lakeville, uh, because we vote together on the Regional School Committee, that, uh, both are recommending to, uh, right now, tentatively set for, uh, June 16th, um, for the, uh, annual election. Once again, that, you know, we're supposed to, uh, post it 20 days, you know, before that date. So I, I would recommend that we say, okay, we are gonna have it that date, but, once again, don't vote for that date until we see what happens over the next, uh, couple of weeks, and then we can decide, because once you vote it, you know, you're kinda stuck with it, you know, and then you gotta reschedule it, and it's kinda complicated, as we found out. So, that would be my recommendation for now.
Okay, um, not much I can add to that. Um, again, just to reiterate, we do need to vote the same time as Freetown, because we do have the Regional School Committee. So, the dates that we are looking at are June 16th for the election, and June 22nd, hopefully, for the annual town meeting. So, we will continue to do our work to try to solidify those and let people know, um, for sure, what those dates are gonna be. Uh, and, and again, we go, we work on that with the town clerk, with the town administrator, um, and we work on that election with the folks in Freetown, so there's a lot of, um, a lot of contributing folks. Oh, sorry, Tracy?
Freetown did vote to set their election date, um, yesterday to June 16th.
Okay, so they definitely have that set, so, um, we will probably be, give it another few, whatever, and, um, hopefully do the same. Um, okay, so, Agenda Item Number 11 is the discussing mosquitoes and Triple E spraying, which, you know, unfortunately, was a huge consideration for us here last year. We were in one of the worst sections for, um, Triple E, and, um, I think a lot of people remember, the governor even came here, Governor Baker even came to Lakeville, to the Lakeville Library, to discuss it with all kinds of scientists, and, you know, and included our local people. And, um, there was supposed to be some work done on this this past winter, and I'm not quite sure how far the state got, but, you know, now this hit, but unfortunately for us, what this could potentially mean is that, you know, we're stuck in the house here, not being able to go anywhere, and then the mosquitoes are gonna come out, and we won't be able to go out at night. So, um, Maureen, if you can, I know you've been working on this, so if you can give us an update, that would be great.
Sure, well, as, as Chairman Fabian laid out before, last year, we had, um, probably the worst year I can remember for anything related to Triple E. Um, and we had to shut down our parks, um, we had a, a dusk-till-dawn ban on, uh, on anyone using our parks. Um, we had sports teams that couldn't meet, uh, it was overall a, a very short season for people, um, and it was very difficult. Um, flash forward to, uh, the beginning of, uh, March, I started reaching out to Plymouth County Mosquito Control, um, and asking when they can spray the first of what they're spraying. And their first step is to spray larvicides, um, over bodies of water, like swamps and standing water, in order to, um, stop the first layer of mosquitoes from breeding and, uh, and being able to lay their eggs on the water. Um, so, I, um, I spoke with Ross at Plymouth County Mosquito Control, um, and he said there was a problem with us getting sprayed. Uh, and the problem was that the Mass Audubon Society would not allow us to spray over the Great Cedar Swamp, which they have control over. So, um, meanwhile, I started reaching out to Mass Audubon, I reached out to, uh, Department of Public Health, um, and then, um, more and more, I was reaching out to anyone that was involved in it. So, unfortunately, um, COVID-19, um, started taking place, and people started working outside of their homes, and it's been very difficult to get a hold of people. Um, but I did end up getting a hold of Plymouth County Mosquito Control, and they ended up getting a hold of Mass Audubon and, um, and their, uh, and their head of, uh, of Massachusetts, and they affirmed that they will not allow spraying in, uh, for the Great Cedar Swamp. Um, so if anyone is familiar with an overview of how big the Great Cedar Swamp is, and how much it takes up of Lakeville, you can see that if that whole body of water is not getting sprayed, then that's gonna create a huge problem, um, for Triple E, uh, for this year. So, uh, again, speaking to, um, Plymouth County Mosquito Control, they said they can't come out and do the remaining two smaller bodies, they have to come out with a full force and, and spray over all of those bodies. In the meantime, Middleborough's been sprayed twice now. So, Middleborough has, has been able to have, um, two rounds of larvicide to ensure that their people are being protected from tri- but, from triple, from the spread of Triple E early in the season. We've missed two rounds now, in my estimation. I would like us all to kinda get together and write a letter to the governor expressing how big of a concern this is for the people of the town of Lakeville, because like you said, we're gonna come out of COVID-19 sometime this summer. Are we gonna come out and, and have people limited, and not be able to play on the fields, and not be able to be out at night, and not be able to be all those things that they're dreaming of doing right now? Uh, we don't wanna follow one epidemic with another, uh, we wanna be as proactive as we can. And, um, I've reached out, and I know, uh, you've also reached out to, um, to Senator Rodericks and Representative Oral, and they're, they're definitely in support of, of, you know, furthering this conversation and bringing it to its highest levels. But I only, I think only a massive amount of people, um, writing letters to the governor is going to make a difference. So I would suggest that I write up a form letter, um, to the governor, um, expressing our position, and I post it on the website, along with the address, um, for them to, the email address for them to mail it into, uh, along with on a Facebook site. And I would love the people of Lakeville to start a letter-writing campaign, um, and, and push that to the governor's office, to let him know that, you know, we're not willing to go from crisis to crisis here, and we're hoping for some action.
Right, I mean, I, um, and I do understand the concerns of, you know, the Mass Audubon Society, I, I do. I understand the environmental concerns, but even as we learned in that session with the governor last year, um, a lot of what they're using to spray with is not like it used to be in the olden days. It's far more environmentally friendly. Um, and, and like you said, I mean, I won't speak for Representative Oral, but I know, you know, that he actually expressed that exact sentiment to Governor Baker, who I know is just exhausted right now, you can tell when you see. But, um, but this, this is, you know, we were in one of the most difficult areas for Triple E last year, so we do have to, you know, we do have to speak up for ourselves, because, uh, the last thing I wanna see is our parks remaining closed, um, you know, because of this.
Exactly.
Yep, um, Rich, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
All set, okay, I just don't wanna forget you, that's all.
It's okay, there's enough said, so...
I don't know who's muted and who's not muted sometimes, so... Um, so anyways, Maureen, we will definitely look for that on, uh, on the town website, and, um, did you say you were gonna put it on Facebook, too?
Of course, that's, that's where I, uh, I seem to have my, uh...
The best, yeah, the best response. Okay, um, so, the next Agenda Item is Agenda Item Number 12, and, um, this is, uh, not, a little more than housekeeping, but, um, so, we all know we built a new police station, and there was a committee that was formed, it was the Police Station Building Committee. Um, the Selectman's representative to that committee was Aaron Burke. So, after, um, the election, he, even though he wasn't a selectman anymore, the selectman at the time had voted to let him fill out, um, the time on the committee, uh, at, at least until the doors opened, um, because he had been a part of that project for so long. Um, while there hasn't been, there's been stuff going on, just paperwork and everything, but we did, this is no secret, we did go to bond, we did, you know, do the borrowing to pay for, um, the police station. But now, at this point, um, there is still some work that needs to be done to close everything out. So there is still a position that needs to be filled by one of the selectmen to be the, um, representative on the building committee. I'm not sure if anyone knows, but Rich LaCamera was actually on that Police Station Building Committee and contributed a lot to, you know, getting all that, um, work, all that construction done, and, and, and everything. So, um, it would be my motion to appoint, um, Rich LaCamera to be the Selectman's designee for the Police Station Building Committee. Um, if appointed, the term will expire July 31st, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion, Rich?
I just wanna explain why. The reason why is the project has gotta be closed out by June 30th. And, you know, under the circumstances here, and trying to get things all coordinated that, that need to be finished, um, I wanna take the responsibility on to close out this project, which I have done at other projects, you know, that I've been involved in. So, uh, we all don't have much time left, so that's the reason why I'd like to be the designee.
Um, I do know that last year, I, I was running unopposed. I had told, you know, the then, um, Board of Selectmen that, um, I would be happy to step up to, you know, um, and, and it was fine that, you know, Aaron did it, because, like, again, just like you, you guys have been on the same building committee for a long time. So I also think in this particular case, it just makes sense. You know everything there is to know about that police station from being on the building committee, so I would, um, I would be really happy to have you there. So, all those in favor of Rich LaCamera being the Selectman's designee to the Police Station Building Committee?
Aye.
Aye, Fabian.
LaCamera, aye.
Okay, thank you for doing that, Rich, I know that, you know, um, I know that, that we will be served well. Um, so, next thing, um, we have is new business. We already did work with Mike, and the commendation for Nate Gagne. Any other new business from anybody? Tracy? Maureen?
No, you had asked me to remind you, um, on, uh, on a recognition, we were going to have a moment of silence.
Yeah, yep, um, and I, I apologize, we were a little confused at the beginning, I wanted to do that at the beginning, but we were trying to get everyone in, and I got distracted, so... So, we recently did lose two really important people to this town, two people that have really worked, worked for the town, Janet Tracy, who was the town clerk, wonderful person. She passed away last weekend, and Sylvester Zink, Zinkowitz, who, um, I can't tell you how many conversations I had with him, I considered him a friend. I was really, you know, upset to find out about both of these people. I can't even begin to count how many years they both, you know, put, um, put into the town on committees. Um, I, I know Jan even volunteered after she had retired from town clerk. Rich, I know you knew them, too, I don't know if you wanna say anything, and then maybe we can just have a small moment of silence, um, for them.
Well, I know Jan very well, because, you know, I served, you know, when I was in the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, I've known her for a long, long time. She's just a great person and a great lady, I mean, she really would do anything for you and help out anybody, whether it was the town or anybody else that needed any support. As far as Zink is concerned, you know, um, Zink, once again, you know, sometimes, uh, he could have been a pain, but he did his homework, and he was always prepared, you know, when he went to the planning board meeting and asked all kinds of questions, and, and, uh, really researched it, so, to both of them, you know, I'd like to thank them for their many, many years of service to the town.
Yeah, me too. Um, Maureen, Tracy, I know Tracy, you worked with them both.
Yeah, um, Jan was just an amazing person. Um, I worked with her for a long time, and she rose up through the ranks to become, um, town clerk, and she just always had a smile on her face, such a great positive attitude, and she had a wicked sense of humor, too, which, sometimes she would come out with something, you'd look at her and go, oh my gosh, I can't believe she said that. Um, so, um, you know, my sympathies to her family, and Zink, Zink was just quite a character. He was a great guy, I learned a lot from him, um, had great conversations with him, um, extremely intelligent, and he loved Lakeville, so, um, a great loss on both of them. Yeah, and, um, and I knew Jan, uh, when I started volunteering for... Yeah, and um, and I knew Jan uh, when I started volunteering for committees. Um, uh, Jan had sworn me in for the very first time. And um, she was so friendly and outgoing, you just couldn't fail to have a conversation with Jan when you came in town hall. Uh, she's always available. Um, she wrote a lovely note uh, when I became Town Administrator that, you know, made me cry. She's very sweet. And then Zink was a ball of fun. I mean, Zink was stubborn and very, to Rich's point, he knew he had his facts straight. He had this binder and this massive binder of everything in his world. And he, he might not be able to get it to, but it's in there and he'll find it. And if you are wrong, he's going to let you know that you're wrong. Yeah, and uh, and I will miss him. And I served with him most recently on a master plan. Um, and he's uh, he was an invaluable asset to the town and uh, one we can never replace.
Right, um, I agree. So we'll, we're just do a moment of silence and keep them in our thoughts. Okay, thank you. It's just really sad because these two people would have been people that would have had like lines out the door with people going to pay their respects. And it's just so difficult for all of us now that we can't pay our final respects to them, so. Okay, I am now going to go on to old business and I'm gonna, I don't really have much for old business. So Rich, if you, um, I know you have a couple of things on here, so if you want to take it away.
Yeah, at every uh, meeting here, you know, going forward, I just want to um, give an update on the Lakeville Hospital and the Lakeville Country Club. You know, um, we are, we are telling you what we know, you know, right now. So I know there's things that, you know, are out on Facebook and so forth and so on, but you know, we are going to be as upfront as we can to explain everything that we know uh, currently. So as far as the Lakeville Hospital, you know, is concerned, at the last meeting, I uh, I said that uh, a company called Rhino Investments, you know, out of Boston, um, has a purchase and sale agreement, you know, on that, on that property. And uh, they are proposing some type of distribution center. Uh, we don't have any plans at this point. And when we do get plans and we will let you know, we will make sure that we make them available uh, for the residents and of course, anybody that is adjacent, you know, um, to their, to that property would be notified of any public meetings or any planning board, you know, meetings as well. Um, one, the thing that I want to point out is that um, you know, this, the hospital was bought uh, by Derek Maxey in two thousand and seventeen, I believe. And he purchased it for a dollar. And um, so you know, he purchased it from Stop and Shop, you know, for a dollar. And um, Stop and Shop had the rights to, if there was a grocery store to be built, you know, on the property, the first, they would have the first right of refusal. So a lot of things were said about, you know, what was going to be done with the property and so forth and reusing, you know, the buildings and et cetera. Well, the bottom line is that none of those buildings could be reused for anything. They're in such disarray. So what happened was that um, Derek Maxey, who owned the property, decided that he was going to auction off uh, a lot of the property. So along Route seventy-nine, there's, I think, six or seven, you know, house lots that have been subdivided. And then if you go down, you know, to CVS, to the left of CVS, that there was um, three pieces of property that were sold, three lots that were sold. And then the property that you see on the construction uh, right now is a funeral home. That's uh, that's being built. So the rest of the property, which is about fifty acres of land, uh, includes the former Lakeville Hospital along with the nurses' residence and so forth. So the, the company that's looking at this is doing their diligence and looking at what the costs are, you know, to to tear down that, tear down those buildings, uh, which is a significant amount of money. We're talking millions of dollars, you know, to tear down that bill, to tear down those buildings. Along with um, there's a landfill on that property. It's supposed to be cleaned up. The D E P is going to require that it gets cleaned up. And this company is committed to cleaning up as well. So right now, we don't have any further information, but I want you to know that anytime we have any additional information, uh, we will make sure that it becomes available to you. If anybody wants to have any questions about the former Lakeville Hospital, if you call the Selectman's Office at five oh eight nine four six eight eight oh three. And also our email addresses are out there. I gladly answer any questions I can. Uh, but that's kind of basically where we are. Okay, the next one is uh, the Lakeville Country Club. Um, Lakeville Country Club is also owned by Derek Maxey. And uh, they have a purchase and sale agreement uh, to sell the uh, the property uh, for, to a company called Hillwood Industrial Real Estate out of Dallas, Texas for seven point two million dollars. And once again, that's a preliminary, you know, no plans have been submitted, no discussion about what they're trying to do, the size of the distribution center and so forth. And I know that a lot of people are concerned about the access of that property from Crooked Lane to um, Clarke Pond Road. But you need to know that this property was under sixty-one A and sixty-one B. So the owner of that property and including that's in the purchase and sale agreement, the purchase and sale agreement said that they had to, he had to notify the town ten days after the purchase and sale agreement, which was on March nineteenth. And as you know, at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, what needs to be done from that perspective. So what he's asking for is that either the town is going to purchase the property, uh, has the first right of refusal uh, to purchase the property or they have to pay the back taxes for ten years uh, on the property itself and out of fraud to be released. So we had the uh, member of the Open Space Committee attend the last meeting to discuss it. And I believe that there's a meeting going to be um, held for the Open Space Committee, you know, to discuss this. But everybody should understand that if the town is going to purchase the property, uh, the first thing that we have to do is we have to do an appraisal of the property. And we already have, they already have a purchase and sale agreement of seven point two million dollars. And uh, then after that, if we decide we're going to purchase it, then I'd have to go to town meeting. And then, of course, we'd have to ask for, go to election to ask for an override. So, once again, uh, we're providing you all the information that we have uh, at this point in time. So if anybody has any questions or concerns, um, gladly give me a call or leave a message and we're glad to get back to you. Uh, there's been some people that have asked, I've got a couple of calls actually already saying, well, you know, I have this membership. I signed up for a two-year membership, you know, am I going to get my money back? Well, you got to talk to the owner of the property, you know, to get that answer. But I can tell you that in the purchase and sale agreement, which is for a hundred and twenty days, um, there's no provisions in there to keep the golf course open. So just want you to know that now. So you need to call and ask them.
Yep.
That's the story.
Okay. And again, Maureen, maybe when you post the information for the triple E letters, maybe you can just um, also put in there if people have questions. I mean, I try to monitor Facebook as much as possible. I monitor Lakeville Helping Lakeville. I monitor the Lakeville um, complaint box. And I do see some of the questions that people are asking and, you know, we try, um, we try to get some information out there, but if people have specific questions, if they want to, you know, send an email, you, even if you can access through the website, um, you can get our emails that way. But if you could, like if we were at a regular meeting, you would have to stand up and say, you know, this is my name, my address. If you could just at least give us some information so, you know, we, we know that we're answering new questions and not the same questions um, over and over again. But um, like Rich said, this is, this is pretty much all we know right now. We don't really know a whole lot more. There's, you know, as, as the information becomes available, we will certainly um, let everyone know. Okay.
You weren't, you weren't talking about putting it in the triple E letter, no?
No, no, no.
I want to make sure.
As, yeah, no, no, not in that, but just when she's doing that, if she can just do another post that has, you know, please reach out to the Selectman's Office, you know. Um, and and, you know, because there's a lot of people, they're just, you know, questioning all kinds of things. And and honestly, we just don't know. We don't, we don't have all that information and we're, we're trying to. Um, but just even posting Maureen's email address and, Maureen, you can filter the questions to the Selectman, that's fine.
Keep a running list too, and I'll post the list as in a question and answer form. Because I'm sure a lot of people have the same questions. And having to, you know, go over and reiterate the same answers. I'll be happy to post a blurb with a, you know, a set of questions and answers if people have.
We know so far.
Exactly, exactly. This is what so-and-so wanted and and here's the answer, so.
And I would ask people for their patience because, you know, I know that you're daily working on COVID nineteen and Mima, FEMA, everything, information and reimbursement. So we will try to get information out as, you know, as best as we can while still trying to deal with the crisis at hand here and the mosquito. So it's definitely a busy place in the Selectman's Office right now. Um, so unless there's any other business, does anyone have any other business?
Yeah, I want to bring something up on old business.
Okay.
Having to do with the uh, the Park Commission that um, we um, uh, Franklin, the Highway Superintendent, myself, uh, Maureen and Nate Darling had met with two members of the Park Commission and talked about, you know, ways to uh, provide staffing levels and to make things better, you know, at the park, at the parks, all of the parks, not just the, you know, Ted Williams Camp. But um, so one of the things that we talked about is that, you know, we were going to provide a full-time foreman uh, to be responsible for all of the parks, along with a laborer, a full-time laborer that um, uh, that the Park Commission was going to fund uh, and that we would fund the uh, full-time um, foreman. Um, I know Maureen attended the Park Commission meeting last night and I watched the meeting. And uh, it's completely different from uh, what we had talked about and what was said. And they're saying that we agreed to fund both positions. And we would not agree to fund uh, both commissions. And it's very disappointing to hear that the Park Commission thinks that uh, uh, we were going to fund uh, both positions and that is not the case at all. We only, we only agreed to, I only agreed to uh, present it to the board to uh, pump, to uh, do, uh, to fund, you know, the, the one position, so. Um, then the other thing that, you know, was talked about was having to do with that um, all of these maintenance uh, people that are working at the Ted Williams Camp and, and in some cases, Clarke Pond, um, that we're going to report to the foreman. So the foreman would take responsibilities and, and set the job responsibilities and tasks every day. And so that particular issue has uh, broken down. So I guess, Maureen, I'm going to ask you, you know, I never said that we would fund both positions, is that correct?
Well, my understanding of this is that the parks was going to fund the laborer position, which is about forty-two thousand dollars a year, which is similar to what the person they're replacing was making for a salary, um, and that we were going to fund the supervisor position out of the highway budget.
Correct, and then the, then the Highway Superintendent would be responsible for those people and manage those people on a day-to-day basis.
Absolutely, and the chain of command was going to be a seg- a segregation of the maintenance throughout that chain of command and maintenance was going to be split off. So all grounds, maintenance, anything to do with the equipment, all those type of things would now be under the purview of the Highway Department. And the parks could focus in on their events management and their league management and all of those type of things that parks departments traditionally do and that we've been making our Parks Department kind of pull double duty to do. Um, and the reason behind that is um, i- if anyone at home doesn't know, we had, we had someone that was a split position between the highway and the parks for the last ten years um, or so. Um, and they were able to use all the highway equipment to do stuff at the parks. Um, and now that, that has been severed and that doesn't exist anymore. So we needed to find a new structure. Not to mention, we really do want to see if we can get some more efficiencies in the park and get some more of those trails cleared and get some more stuff done. And um, Rich, Leah, you know, I have every faith in Franklin, that he is the absolute right person for this job and that him, under his leadership, all his people will make that park shine. And it'll be a wonderful thing for the people of Lakeville.
Yeah, and I mean, I, I agree with the point that you just made too, that um, you know, we're asking the parks to do, like you said, double duty, but it almost seems, you know, a little bit easier for the Highway Department to sort of take care of all that heavy lifting that goes on in the parks. The clearing, the this, the that, the.
It's their wheelhouse, you know, it's, it's completely their wheelhouse. And it's something that they're going to get, it's going to be better than what they have currently and it's going to work out better. It's, it's a win for the town, um, and it's a win for the parks. So have to make sure we're all on the same page and get everyone to understand that we're structuring this in a way that everyone can succeed.
Right, and I mean, they are already using some of the resources, uh, you know, they're using the mechanics at the town barn. They're using, at least this way here, if the Highway Superintendent has control over all this, he can say, okay, today I know we need this, instead of just, oh, well, this doesn't work anymore, can you fix it for us? And, you know, so I, I think it would definitely be a much more efficient use of resources. Um, and it would free up the Parks Department to do, you know, all the other stuff. So um, so we're, we're definitely going to be working on this. We definitely need to have some joint meetings. Um, and and these meetings are always better in person, but we're, we're going to have to do, you know, a couple, we can't really delay on these positions because they're, you know, um, we need, we need to get these positions um, underway. And um, you know, we're, 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 we need to meet with the Parks Department as soon as possible. So that probably means a Zoom meeting like this.
And and I'll talk to them today after this meeting and we'll set something up, like, you know, with Tracy. We'll get a Board of Selectmen, Joint Board of Selectmen, Parks Committee meeting and we can discuss the structure and then probably um, the um, the contracts too, if uh, if, if the board desires. So I, I think there's a lot of room for success here. There's a lot, there's, there's a lot of ways we can win. We just need to make sure everything's structured the way that we need it to be and that everyone knows, you know, what the plan is and and we'll, we'll get there. Um, you know, and and I, I'm disappointed that there was a hiccup and last night that it, it wasn't understood prior to that, but I think we're going to get to where we need to go.
Okay.
Well, I guess I was disappointed too, Maureen, that, you know, we had discussed this and that you didn't step up and say, this is what we agreed to. Okay, so I'm disappointed that we're at this point, we have already hired one person, you know, that's already committed and has been working over there. And now to s- to find out that this scenario is not acceptable to them. We need to get this resolved right away. Because we have a foreman out there that we're trying to hire and interview. And it should have been said at that meeting that we were going to be responsible for the foreman and they were going to be responsible for the labor. If that's not the ca- and these people are going to report to um, um, Franklin Highway. If that's not the case, then we need to stop this right now. Because this is ridiculous. We've talked about it many times. And them to say that that's not what we agreed to is unacceptable. So you need to get this meeting called immediately. I'm talking about Thursday.
Yeah, and.
We can't go on like this. And I feel bad for Franklin because he's committed, you know, to doing this and he's provided the resources, you know, to do it. And all of a sudden, for them to say, oh, we didn't agree to that? No way.
Right, and I mean, it would be nice if we could. Right, and I mean, it would be nice if we could have all the members of the parks department participate, so my schedule is rather flexible. So Maureen, if you want to figure out what works for them, and I, I don't care what time it is, 7:00 AM, I can be here, so, you know.
We'll get that together. We obviously need 48 hours in order to, to do that, so.
We need to have every member of the population present at the meeting.
Yep, and.
Then don't schedule it.
Right, and we'll have minutes and everything else that we need so that we can resolve this issue. You know, as fast as we can and as best as we can here, so. Okay, we will wait to hear from you on that. Anything else? Any other business that may properly come before the meeting? Tracy?
Um, we do have one thing that when I was going through my Excel spreadsheet on appointments, we had done a few of the selectman appointments. We do have Maureen's appointment as ADA coordinator, which expired on April 1st. So we can do that or we can wait till the next meeting, but we do have that outstanding.
Um, I think we'll wait till the next meeting on that one. I know it's busy in the office right now.
Yep.
I don't mind coming in to help, but I'd really, I'm already thinking ahead to July because all of a sudden, we just get 150 names, you know, of all the people that are on different committees that need to be reappointed and positions and everything. So maybe I can come in and help you organize those too. And that way, at least Rich and I, if we go that, you know, if it's still him and I, we can have those names ahead of time too, so we can study everything in the committees and look at the attendance and everything else, so that's just.
I have given you the attendance list from the last six months for 2019. And I am going to try to pull an attendance list together. I don't know how successful I'll be, you know, for June 1st. But I always give the selectmen in June, I will give you the breakdown of everyone that is upcoming for appointment. So you will have the attendance list from July 1st to December 31st and the preliminary appointments.
Okay, all right, thank you. Rich, anything else?
All set, thanks.
Okay, Maureen, last call.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, so if that's it, I just want to thank everyone and I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 4:56 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, Fabian, aye.
LaCamera, aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.